Six thirty, I call, do we need to work? First order of business is public comment. If you have a comment, you can come to the podium stage with your name and address. And keep your comments for three minutes or less. After you're recognized.
Brian Cisneros, 200 Wadley Falls Road. Just catching up with you since the last time I was here in regards to the school budget for the next five years. We were talking about how the middle school affects the budget. I know there were some questions as to how Scott had figured it in our last meeting and how it really was happening. And I know, I believe Scott and Dr. Morris had a conversation last week, if I'm not mistaken, to kind of get that kind of rectified. So if you have any more questions on that, want a little more detail, we're going to have to do that well versed on how it's going to work over the next five years because I know that's a concern for a lot of the taxpayers. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope? No? Oh. Dave?
Thank you. I'm Dave Cedarholm, 81 Fox Garrison Road. And I'd like to read a letter. I provided here a hard copy. I'm here tonight to offer my support and encouragement to the Lee Select Board to remain steadfast in maintaining their position to not allow structures on conservation easements in the town of Lee. I would also like to extend my appreciation to the Conservation Commission for their stewardship of the town's conservation easement properties. As a professional engineer, I work with a variety of structure types on a daily basis and thought it would be helpful to provide some clarification on what my profession considers a structure. The definition of a structure is very broad, is a very broad term from a land use perspective. And attempting to narrow the definition of a structure to make it possible to build a treehouse or some other type of structure on conservation easement properties is a very dangerous slippery slope. According to dictionary.com, the definition of a structure is a mode of building, construction or organization, arrangement of parts, elements, or constituents, or something built or constructed as a building, bridge, or dam. A structure is considered a structure whether it is intended for recreation, storage of firewood, or a lawnmower, or a residence. A structure is still a structure whether it rests by gravity on cement blocks, is nailed to rough-sawn wooden posts, bolted to live tree trunks, or fastened to a concrete foundation. There is an equivalent impact to the aesthetics, hydrology, soil conditions, habitat and flora, habitat of flora and fauna when any structure is placed on a piece of property regardless of whether the structure is elevated one foot or five foot above the ground. These impacts also affect how the public experiences this stretch of shoreline when a structure is built nearby a water body. This is a very important point considering public funds were used to preserve this property. These public funds were used to conserve this property in perpetuity and to preserve the natural shoreline of the river for a variety of reasons. One purpose of the easement was to allow the public to appreciate the undisturbed nature of the riparian buffer from the river by means of a human-powered craft such as a canoe or a kayak. Erecting any structure, including a treehouse, within a riparian buffer of a river is a clear violation of this public purpose. Also, it doesn't take a tree expert to conclude that bolting an elevated structure such as the one in question to a cluster of trees will shorten the life expectancy of those trees. So one could argue that in addition to being responsible for removing the structure, the owner should also pay restitution for the damage caused to the trees, or at least post a bond to cover replacing the trees after they die voluntarily. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, put the list.
Richard Lovas, 80, North River Road. Are we, are we talking about Article Five now?
No, we're still on public comment.
Well, I would say by Mr. Cedarholm's definition of a structure, we should probably rein in all the wood duck houses and all that easement land. Because I guess they'd be conservative structure also. And as far as the bolting goes, I guess we probably shouldn't sap, shouldn't dampen the trees anymore. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
One more? Twice? I have number three, Deb Sugarman, Conservation Commission Representative.
Also a member of the Lee Conservation Commission. So about a year ago Suzanne Peterson of the LREC, Landbury River Advisory Committee, approached Catherine Fisher and myself about a grant possibility to enhance the Little River Trail located in Little River Park. We wrote the grant, submitted it, and we were awarded $4,375 to do the following. One, we're going to build a kiosk at the trail entrance to increase visitor knowledge of the natural history of the Little River. Two, we're going to design and place four trail posts along the trail to help interpret the natural history of the trail. Three, we're going to build a small bridge across a stream that bisects the trail to increase visitor access and decrease trail degradation. Four, we're going to place two posts and a chain and lock along the bank of the Little River at the end of the trail to prevent ATV access to the trail from the river. And lastly, we're going to build and place a bench along the bank of the Little River at the end of the trail to increase visitor viewing. So we're here to let you know about the grant and the upcoming work on the trail. And I assume you know that we also need a signature from Scott Budby on the MOA to proceed. So I've asked what kind of questions you have about it.
Any questions for the board?
Is there a couple at this point? Is everything to be purchased or anything going to be taken off-site to be used?
Some of this material will be taken off-site for the kiosk. And that's being worked on with, oh, help me out. Steve Bullock? Oh, yeah, Steve Bullock and Don Quigley.
Okay. And the bench you talked about, is it wood or stone?
It is wood, yeah. Yeah, it's going to be, I can't remember. My husband's building it, so.
It's wood?
It's wood.
And the signs?
The signs are all wood.
They're all to be wood with indent and?
So what we're thinking about doing, we haven't totally decided yet, but we're, the signs, you're talking about the little posts with the signs. We're going to try and have QR codes on them so that people will be able to use their phones because you can't put too much information on a little post. So we thought if we had QR codes, then people will be able to use their phones and get a lot more information about that piece of the trail.
And one last question.
Yeah.
Looking over their proposal here in winter 2019, the summer of 2020. Has any of this happened at all?
Some of it, yeah. We started a little bit. We didn't, we didn't want to do too much because we don't have the money yet because the MOA has not signed yet.
And how long do you think it's going to take you through the summer?
Yeah, through the summer. We're, we're, we're going to be done in the fall, so.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a question, Mr. Brown? Any questions? No. I have two, well, really one. Do these people that are going to be working, this is a question for Julie, do these people that are working need to have insurance and liability issues that we need to deal with? Or are they going to be volunteers, or how is that going to work?
Well, I should assume, but I guess I did assume that they were volunteers that were doing the work or were paying. Some people were paid. Okay, so the people who were paying should provide a specific insurance. But anyone who was volunteering to the Conservation Commission, we're okay with that as long as they keep, keep it honest and is working on the project.
All right. Is there any problem with getting insurance from these people that are going to?
No, Catherine and I have just talked about that, so we'll make sure that we get those.
Okay.
And they were all people that were recommended to us by LREC that have done work on other trails, so.
Just trying to manage the liability of people.
I totally understand that. What's that?
Anybody have any questions? No?
No question. Where will the bridge that you speak of be located?
Have you ever been on that trail?
I live near it.
Oh, so there's, there's just a little stream that bisects the trail and we'll put just a little bridge over it because what happens is that it's really hard for people to access the trail because it's, it's too big to jump over, so you have to walk through it. So, and it, it doesn't do the trail much good when people walk through the stream, so. Good question.
Any notes? Oh.
Yep.
I'm going to have you come up. I really should have had her come up. You want to ask a question?
Do I have to sit down?
You can stand there, but if you can come up and state your name and address.
Steve Handler, 314 Lea Road. Are you going to have something other than the QR codes for people who might not have a phone?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Steve Bullock, Public Works Manager.
So, I think it was about two weeks ago I talked to you guys about the town of Madberry reached out about the possibility of utilizing our transfer station because they're at a crossroads with their waste management stream. So about a week after we had our conversation, I went to one of their committee meetings, got more information about what they wanted and got their numbers from them. So what they had requested of me there was to come up with what it would cost them to come here so they could present it to their select board and get other quotes from other waste companies like Waste Management and all the best way. So what I started doing was asking DHHS how some of this stuff would, yeah, DHHS, DES, how some of this stuff would go. Essentially, we would have to do, erase, or redo our permit to operate that we currently have and it would have to turn into a co-op because on our permit it says we only take refuse from the town of Lee. We'd have to expand it to there. So what I started doing was looking at other co-ops that are in the state and there's really only one that works. It's the one in Pittsfield that has Pittsfield, Barnstead, Chichester, and Epsom going with. And the way they figure out their cost for the towns going to it is they go by population. So what I started doing was taking the transfer station budget, so the one that has everyone's pay, the electricity, all that in.
And?
And what should happen if you go by that formula that that Pittsfield one does is they're about a third less population than us, so everything that wouldn't need to be raised, they would then pay a third of. And then things like electricity, which obviously would go up, you'd be bailing more and stuff like that, things like that, you would, I'd raise a third and they would pay for. And then that formula didn't work out with the solid waste budget part because their total tonnage for the year going through Lambrey Co-op is 556, which is about half of what our tonnage is. So we sent about 1,000 ton, a little over 1,000, they sent about 556, so those are more real numbers, so I know for a fact that they spent $37,000 on tipping fees for that. So I just added that onto what the budget would be. The rest of it, I just took half of what our budget was and added it. Considering that they were half of our MSW, I was estimating they'd be pretty close to half of everything else. The problem is, is they don't have records of what they're getting rid of for electronic waste. They don't have records of what they're getting rid of for C and D, so I don't know. So that's kind of a blind spot for going into it.
What's the, what, I'm sorry, you're done. What's, what's the impact, what's the impact on us if we say, okay, let's go ahead and build, utilize, we'll take care of solid waste, whatever, whatever? What's the impact on us relative to facility and, I mean, compactors?
All that stuff, all that stuff can handle it. The facility can handle it. You may have to open an extra day because it's going to, Saturday is already busy.
People?
People wise, have enough part-timers that work here and there, probably be able to fill in, but the part-timer budget would have to go up by a third.
And do they have any, do they have any machinery that will now sit idle that we might?
They don't have anything.
They don't have anything.
So like, for instance, when we pack one of our cans to send, just like an open top, we're getting 10, 11, 12 tons packed into it with the block. When they send an open-top dumpster over there to the landfill, they're putting like three tons in it. And they don't have as good of a hauling contract as us, so they're paying almost $100 more currently per haul than we do. And then they also utilize Dover, they pay $7,000 a year to utilize the town of Dover.
Steve, this 556 tons, they don't recycle, right?
They do. The problem is, is they use Davis. So the way their trash pickup works, and I can speak to this because I'm a Madberry taxpayer, we pay $4.50 a week to have someone come pick up our trash. We're only allowed to put six bags out and we pay $4.50 a week. He doesn't pay the tipping fees for it, so we're just paying $4.50 for transport. The town of Madberry pays the tipping fee to?
Waste Management.
Waste Management now, it used to be Lambrey Co-op. So, and we have dual-stream recycling, which is, we have co-mingle, so you put a pin out that's got all your plastic, aluminum cans, tin cans, and glass, and the rest of it's paper, cardboard and mixed paper. On average, Madberry's paying $134 a ton for the last year to recycle that. So they do recycle, but if we put it out to the curb and he comes to pick it up and it's been raining, the cardboard is no longer recyclable, it has to be thrown out.
Mr. Brown, you have a question?
How, just real quickly, how, I'm trying to envision how they deliver, how they deliver the solid waste to us. They already sorted it to a certain extent?
They would, if they came here, they would do the exact same thing everyone in this room that utilizes the transfer station does.
They would, okay, so they would sort it?
They, they, they have to abide by the same rules as the taxpayers here.
And they would just close the facility they have?
They don't, the Madberry transfer stations only open one Saturday a month and then every other Wednesday from four to dusk, so.
Okay, so they're coming out well with the service regalia, right?
They would be, yes.
Okay, good.
Question, I think, Mr. Brown had mentioned with respect to facilities, but what about impacting equipment? You're talking about a third increase in budget on this, but again, anything else, using equipment more?
Yeah, and we have to do that, but that's Warren article stuff and I'm not privy to how that would work. You know what I mean? Because to me, it's not fair that, me being a Madberry taxpayer, that if I'm allowed to come to the Lee transfer station, everyone here is paying into a Warren article every year to help replace the compactors and the skid steers, they're not. So something would have to be worked out.
Well, if they put it in the pricing, something would.
Something would have to be worked out that way, but that's, we're going to have to sit down and figure it out.
Could be an overhead fee or something or somehow that goes into a special?
And I mentioned that tour, they all understand that.
This is a thought, is this, you having vision and a lead to the contract?
No, I don't. Because it would end up becoming a co-op, so probably being indefinite until someone decided they didn't want to be in it anymore, then you deal with them.
One of the things that I would like to see is, because you've given us a spreadsheet with some, with his Madberry estimated cost, I would assume, I would like to see it broken out in terms of what would be subsidizing our costs and what would be additional costs that we'd have to incur if they used our facility. So there's two different things. Because I would envision if they're going to be subsidizing some of the stuff we already do, I think you could probably put those monies away someplace so that that could go toward, you know, equipment replacement or something like that. So, and then the expense would just be a pass-through in terms of like the extra stop cost to haul, extra cost in terms of the MSW that has to be taken, the C and D that has to be dropped off and stuff like that.
Yeah, and then, I mean, the other thing I would say is whatever they bring here that we recycle stays here, they don't, yeah. And then the other thing that that co-op up in Pittsfield does is where it's in Pittsfield, all the other towns pay Pittsfield for some sort of, that goes to the fire and the police department for covering the area too. It's not a huge, huge sum, but they're paying for some of the fire protection for the building.
Well, I'm interested, and I think you should proceed, across from the preliminary stages at this time.
Yeah.
You spoke about in terms of they would come here just like everybody else. Was there any conversation about how willing their residents would be to do that? Because right now, they don't have to do anything. They bring their stuff out to the curb.
And that was one of the big things they were talking about, but they're, the committee members all say they would do it, but that's, you know what I mean? You've had curbside pickup for who knows how long, now all of a sudden you don't have curbside pickup anymore.
So I'd also assumed that the 450 would, they have been paying, they'd worked out some other arrangement, or how would they do that?
So if they wanted to continue doing the trash pickup the way they're doing, it would go towards probably something like the people that live in Lee that use Davis would pay for, they'd pay for the pickup and then they'd have to pay him on top of that, the tipping fee, so it would probably cost more.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Sounds good. Sounds like a neighborly thing to do, but long as we don't.
Sounds like a neighborly thing to do if we make one.
That's exactly right, you said it nicely. Not to make a killing, but at the same time, we want to protect what we have.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please continue.
And then, the time of year again, I come and ask, can I have your permission to start posting roads for weight? I kind of left it a little more vague than last year because I like a little bit more leeway to decide which roads get posted depending on how the season goes and depending on what we feel like the weight should be. The only road that I do not anticipate posting, and this just came up today, is Captain Emerson Smith, the one that's across the street from DeMar Hill Farm, because the power company's trying to go over there and do the rights away again. And this morning, we found out they were going to access it from Randall Road, which is a tiny little road that we just paved. And they're talking about hauling in 100 loads of gravel and all those big trucks with the wood on them, so it's a lot easier to fix a small gravel road than a road that just got paved, so I worked with them and they're going to keep Captain Emerson gravelled and smoothed while they're working on it and put gravel in it to keep it the way it is. That was part of the agreement that we made so they could use it to get to where they need to go.
To the copters where this is well?
Yeah, because they were accessing it through his property on the upper end.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
No questions.
I move to authorize the Public Works Manager to post weight limits on certain roads at his discretion to be in effect from the date of the posting to April 15th, 2020. About a second?
Second.
In discretion. I, motion passes.
Oh, and Deb's not here anymore. The wood we were going to use for that is locust wood.
Oh, locust, yeah.
Because it's rot resistant, so the plan was to go look at conservation lands around and see if we could find any that are big enough for what they're looking for.
Is it black locust?
Yeah. The problem is, there's a lot of bark, so you need to, there's a lot of bark on them. You need to find a pretty big one to get it to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, can we just go back to the Little River Trail project?
Yeah.
We didn't get hold on that.
Oh, you didn't get it? Yes. I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Lee Conservation Commission and the Lambrey River Wild and Scenic Subcommittee with regards to the Little River Trail Enhancement Plan. About a second.
Second.
A discussion. I'll lose the paper. Say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Ricky Stevens?
Rick Stevens, 51 Tuller Road. I'm sorry, Mr. Cedarholm just left because I was going to ask him if he really thinks that we need to take all our wood duck houses and pet houses out of the conservation land. There's been a lot of misinterpretation about this treehouse issue over the last seven Just kind of throw in a little thing here that this whole treehouse, whatever you want to call it, is now across the country. We have support from people in Maine, South Carolina, Florida, Arizona, California, Oregon, Alaska, and South Dakota. And everybody is very upset that this is all happening. And as someone said at the last public meeting, people are laughing at this snarky little town of Lee. A treehouse is six and a half feet off the ground, it is just a shell, there is no electricity, insulation, or water, it is not a structure. I have not been able to find any rules or regulations pertaining to treehouses. Easement deed states no structures or improvements, including but not limited to a dwelling, any portion of a septic system, tennis court, swimming pool, dam, dock, or other water-dependent structure, aircraft, landing strip, tower, or mobile home shall be introduced onto the Trees do not have, are not a permanent foundation. Trees grow, they die, and other ones grow up beside them. All of the above are in the easement deed, are either in the ground or they have a permanent foundation. The treehouse is six and a half feet off the ground and four trees that are in absolutely perfect shape. They've healed up, they'll be there as long as the people don't cut them down or a wind storm takes them down. This being the case, a treehouse is not a structure and can't be considered a violation. This being the case, a treehouse is not a structure and can't be considered a violation, which means Section C, subparaphrase one and two in the easement document have no bearing on a treehouse. The treehouse is not detrimental to the purpose of the easement, it does not infringe upon the scenic enjoyment of the general public, and we have seen a whole lot of people slowing down and stopping, trying to find it, since this all started, and most of them never get to see it, and when the leaves come on the trees, you can't see it even from Lamprey River. It does not infringe upon the preservation and conservation of open spaces for productive farmland and wet or wild lands, which is part of the easement deed. The findings emailed from a town lawyer to a conservation commission member does not state that there was a clear violation. And I think somebody else is gonna speak to that, rest of that. The email does not, the email from the town lawyer did not direct me to take the treehouse down, in fact, it was not even addressed to me. The conservation commission has misrepresented both the town lawyer's letter and Selt's position to the select board and the general public. In conversations and a letter that I'm sure you guys have read by now from Selt, that they have taken no, um...
Stand.
Position. Aye.
No stand.
No stand on this at all. They are very happy that the town is dealing with what they need to deal with, and they don't want to do anything. And I'd like to say that I heard a term the other day that was used, and it's called discretionary power. Discretion is defined as the power or right to decide or act according to one's own judgment. And I would hope that common sense, common sense prevails, and to help that the select board conceive that this is only a treehouse, it is temporary. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Suzanne Hebert, fifty-one Tuttle Road, Lee. So I will start by saying, I am not a public speaker, and yet, I am here again. I would like to share the timeline of events, communications, and visits that have brought us here today. It will shed light on the untruths, errors...
Excuse me, I have to ask you to speak a little louder.
Louder, okay. I'm not really good at this. Okay, so it will shed light on the untruths, errors, and blatant ineptitude that has occurred over the last seven months. It started in July of two thousand nineteen. On July fourteenth, one conservation commission member walked the property for the annual easement monitoring. He took offense to the treehouse. On September thirteenth, four conservation commission members and one Selt representative visited the treehouse. On November twenty-fifth, Ricky received an email from a conservation commission member stating that they had received the town attorney's review of the easement and wanted to meet with him. Ricky replied he would be gone for a week, but could meet with them upon his return. He also requested to see the review. He received a response saying this would start the thirty-day clock ticking for the removal of the treehouse. On December tenth, a conservation commission member forwarded the town attorney's email to Ricky. On December eleventh, two conservation commission members came to fifty-one Tuttle Road. Ricky was verbally directed to take it down, because the lawyer's email said so, which it didn't. Ricky says the treehouse is not coming down without a valid legal reason. A formal letter, which should have been the next step after the informal meeting, as suggested by the town lawyer, never arrived from the conservation commission. Additionally, the easement states, if the conservation commission believes a breach of the agreement has occurred, it shall notify the grantor, Ricky, in writing of such breach. As I said, no such letter was received. On January fourteenth, there was a conservation commission meeting. According to the minutes, five of the nine members were present, as well as one select board member. A draft letter to Ricky for the selectmen to sign was presented. A motion to second the letter was made, a motion to send the letter was made, it was seconded. The letter that the conservation commission wrote for the selectmen to sign states that the conservation committee voted unanimously that the treehouse is impermissible. There is nothing in the minutes stating this, or even that a vote was taken. On January twenty-seventh, the treehouse is on the agenda for the select board meeting. Ricky was not informed by the conservation commission or the board of selectmen. At the select board meeting, a conservation commission member speaks, asking the board to sign the letter as presented. He stated that Selt determined the treehouse was not legal under the easement. I'll have more to say about this once I get to February seventh. The conservation commission member quotes one sentence of the fifteen-page easement document in the letter. The letter for the board to sign states that they, the select board, have reviewed the findings by the town lawyer and agree with her conclusion that the treehouse, being either a structure or improvement, is impermissible on conservation land. Two of the three select board members signed the letter as presented. On February seventh, Ricky receives a letter from Selt, which explains their role as executory holder of the easement. The letter does not state their position on the treehouse. It does mention that there were recent press comments in the newspaper which attributed positions to Selt that they had not taken or communicated to the town. On February tenth, at the select board meeting, the board hears public comment about the treehouse for approximately forty minutes. There were fifty-seven people in attendance, twenty-one people spoke in defense of the treehouse, two spoke against. On February nineteenth, Ricky sent in their request to be on the February twenty-fourth agenda. On February twentieth, the selectmen met with the town lawyer. On February twentieth, Ricky receives a phone call from the town administrator. She says the selectmen will not make the decision tonight. I have to wonder why. On February twenty-first, the treehouse is put on the agenda with red highlighted notes that there will be no discussion by the selectmen, nor a decision made on Monday night. And here we are. In summary, we built the treehouse with the understanding that a treehouse is not a structure, that it does not need, does not need a permit, because it does not have a foundation, it is not taxable. According to DES, it does not need to comply with river setbacks, it is a treehouse. In the last seven months, there have been lies spoken at public meetings, harassment and bullying by conservation commission members, a lawyer's email illegally forwarded without permission, and a letter signed without understanding the complete picture. I respectfully ask that we be allowed to keep our treehouse in its current location, six and a half feet off the ground and the trees. Thank you.
Anybody else?
John Moss, forty-eight Tuttle Road, across the street. I think there's just a bit of irony, I have two issues. There's a bit of irony here that the, the selectmen voted unanimously for the conservation people to put in two structures on the Little River, um, permanent structures, um, but we're not gonna have this, and on the ground, rather than something with, that's not going to impact anything. That's one. Two, Randy last, at the last meeting, said he regrets ever putting his, his land in conservation easement. David said something about we're setting a bad precedent. My feeling is that we're setting a bad precedent, if we don't let this go, there's no reason to put anything in conservation easement anymore. In fact, based on what we got received in the mail, I think, yesterday, we have quite a large slush fund, and if Ricky and Randy want to get bought back, I think that's a great idea.
Anyone else?
David Rogers, twenty Ferber Drive. I'm, I'm pretty new to the community of Lee, I've only lived here for about three years, but was driving by and I saw the Save the Treehouse signs with my kids, and I just wanted to speak out and say, I want to be part of a community that embraces things like that, I mean, that's why we want to live here. You know, and I see news stories from time to time, from around the rest of the country, where kids get hassled for starting a lemonade stand or something like that, and to think that that might be the kind of reputation that we got for our town, I just wanted to speak out in favor and support of it. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Wendy Fogg, Wednesday Hill Road, um, be short and one time. And just to reiterate my support for the Stevens and for the treehouse, and, and for the taping of this, to remind everybody that there were almost sixty of us at the public comment session, and we're back here, some of us, again, being told that it's pretty much gonna go the same way, that there'll be no comment by, by you folks. And, and I would reiterate Suzanne's question, why not? I think most of us stand together here in, in support of this, and I think it's been made oh so clear by so many people that this is not a structure, it doesn't meet any of the definitions of a structure. The gentleman who spoke at the public comment session, who builds treehouses all over the state, um, reminded us that there is no state code regarding treehouses. And I can't find any good reason, and I've really looked, because I'm a person who believes in logic and doing things fairly, and to take emotion out of situations and to look at them in a pragmatic way. And I can't find any reason, legit reason, why this treehouse should not be on conservation land. So I hope that you will use that discretionary power that you have to make a smart decision, a fair decision, a morally right decision for this town as we move forward, and as other people who own tracts of land and who may be considering conservation easements, that they can come forward comfortably and be willing to make the sacrifice that so many of us have made to grant conservation easements. And, and I feel that I can't not say something about the comment that, that was made during the public session about, and it's been made many, many times, every time a conservation issue comes up, somebody gets up and talks about, you know, how the, the landowners are raking in the cash to do this. And I just want to remind folks that who, who may watch this, who can't be here, that this idea of a conservation easement being done out of greed is so beyond unreal, and, and so obviously indicating that people don't truly understand what conservation easements are, and the sacrifice the landowners make. That, yeah, you know, we get some money for those easements. I mean, I got four hundred thousand dollars for our easement, but guess what, folks? That means that the landowner has sold the development rights to that property. Yeah, they still own it, they're still paying taxes, the same tax rate that they paid when the land was in current use. So, yeah, we still own the land, but we're still paying taxes, and now we have to go by all the rules that we agreed to go by, that were set by whoever the funding agency was. We never allowed hunting on our property, we have to now. Do we love it? No, we don't love it, but we love the land more than we don't love hunting. And we want to know, as so many people who agree to grant conservation easements want to know, that the land is going to be protected in perpetuity, protected from the building of condos and ballparks and those kinds of things, not treehouses.
Anyone else? Only once, maybe twice? I do not have a background as an auctioneer, I'm just doing this, so give you time to think about it, but, all right, that's it. Thank you. Item number six, Karen Rossi, planning and zoning administrator.
Good evening. So I am here for three things. One is releasing the letter of credit for Maple Heights for the development of Chestnut Way. We currently have a two-year maintenance bond, so we accepted the road two and a half years ago. I know how to clean our room, don't I? I don't take it personal. We'd love your help. Bye, Randy.
Guess what you have to say, nobody gives a damn.
Yeah, nobody cares what I have to say, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. See you, Richard.
So, um, I'm here for, the first thing is to release the letter of credit for Maple Heights, the development of Chestnut Way, we've been holding a two-year maintenance bond on that, fire department signed off on it, highway department signed off on it, and the town engineer signed off on it. So now we just need you folks to agree, sign off on it, sign the letter, so they can get their fifty thousand dollar letter of credit release. That's the first item. The second is New Market Sand and Gravel has a old gravel pit at the end of Fox Garrison Road that they are no longer using, town engineer's gone out there, inspected it, done his report, which is also in your, in your agenda packet, and he agrees it's okay to release their CD that we've had since nineteen ninety-two, I believe. So there's also a letter in your packet for you folks to sign, and by signing that, the bank will release, release the CD back to, um, Mr. Chick. And the third thing is, way back in the early two thousands, after the town bought the Granger Pit, which is now Little River Park, when the town engineer did the inspection, the, um, person who was running the gravel pit at the time, which is Landscapers Depot now, they didn't reclaim it according to the plans, so the town took the bond at the time, which was like ten thousand dollars. We went to court, court was at, the settlement was actually, it actually never followed, they withdrew their case, and the agreement was that the ten thousand three hundred dollars would go back to the town to cover costs on reclaiming the pit, and that's been sitting in an escrow account since then, and every year, Joanne just does her auditing things, but now we can transfer it, by a vote of this board, we can transfer it to the general fund. So those are my three things.
I have one question.
Sure.
Where is, where was the gravel pit on Fox Garrison?
The end of, of Fox Garrison Road by one twenty-five. You can bear, so if you go out to, the easiest thing is to take a left on Fox Garrison Road from, or right, whichever way you're coming, and it's right on the left, it's like wooded, and if you look, you can see a gate. That's it, it's an old gravel pit, they haven't excavated since two thousand and five, I believe. And now they're getting ready to put it on the market, and they want to release the funds and...
All right. I have one for the Maple Heights, I don't have one for the restroom, so...
No, you should have two others, then we're all separate. Yes, we are.
There you go.
There you go.
They're in the, they're in my agenda packet. I got online, but yours.
So we have, what's still in order, I guess?
Sure, Maple Heights is the first one.
Just to authorize the release of the letter, letter of credit issued on behalf of Maple Heights Realty. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, New Market Sand and Gravel. I move to modify, notify the Bank of America that the town of Lee releases its claim to the fund held for the purpose of claiming the so-called, the so-called Chick gravel pit located on Fox Garrison Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I like the so-called, so-called.
So-called.
I bet you like the so-called $10,300 too.
Yeah, I like the so-called.
Now, does Joanne have any more like these little free money things anyways out there?
Not that are coming back to the town. Sorry.
Oh, shoot.
Too bad.
All right. I move to transfer all the funds held in the Granger Pit escrow fund, currently estimated to be approximately $10,300 to the town's general fund. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
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 I notice this is not called so-called either. Do you want to sign these afterwards?
Yeah, I'm just collecting them.
Okay, I'll keep these two down here. All right. Anything else, Karen?
Thank you.
So let us know when you have more free money. Come back anytime.
I'll try. Thank you.
Chief Johnson?
Evening. In preparation of reducing our fleet by one vehicle, the oldest Charger that we have, I brought it over to Motoring Images, which is owned by David Demming on Route 4, to have it de-identified. That's removing all the lettering and decals and everything. And I had stopped by to talk to him and he asked what the process, we're going to move the car. I said, well, we usually put it up in bid. And I said, you know, a car like this is usually worth around $1,000, $1,500. And he expressed interest in it. I don't know if you noticed, he has a zebra car out front. So he was interested in it. He wants to get rid of that, that car. And he had made the comment that he'd be interested in trading $2,000 in services for the car. And I said, okay, well, let me, you know, run it by the powers that be. And I started thinking about it. You know, he does graphics, lettering. He's done, he did all the graphics for the sign up front. When Scott and I had the front sign of the safety complex redone, he did all the lettering for that. He's done tinting on our windows for us, the entrance doors so people can't see in. Some of Scott's vehicles, Chief Nimitz's vehicles and whatnot. So I started thinking that there is a use for that for what he does in town, especially if the new municipal complex gets passed. You're going to need the downstairs windows are going to need to be tinted so people can't see in. You can see out. All the doors are going to need to be identified, town clerk's office, selectman's office, things like that. And that $2,000 could go towards that. And not to mention the fact that it's about $200 or $300 for him to de-identify a car, wouldn't have to pay for that. This is a high mileage car. I know Julie put some numbers in here. Most recently, the 2013 Charger. That's the car that I had given to code enforcement back a number of years ago. So that's why the mileage on that car was so low and that was a solid color car, all black. So that's why we were able to get that much money for it. This is a two-tone car, so it's going to lessen the value and who's going to want it because it's still going to look like a police cruiser out on the road. So just here to get the selectman's vote or permission to transfer ownership of the car to Dave Demming in return for, you know, we'll have the letter drafted, you know, so Julie approves it, that we have a $2,000 credit with Motoring Images.
I have no problem with that. I'm just going to ask about liability issues. Do you have to sign off on it or something?
What, do we sell it? Yeah, we signed the title over to him. There'll be a bill of sale and whatnot and it'll be his vehicle.
As is where it is.
As is where it is. Just as if we put out the bid.
Julie, any issue with disposing of surplus property this way?
No, the state is fairly silent on how towns can dispose of property. Kind of comes under the general heading of prudential affairs of the town.
How long has he been in business, Chief?
Since I've been here.
Twenty-five, thirty years.
The zebra's been sitting out there a long time, if it even runs.
There's a lot of municipality cruisers, state vehicles, a lot of commercial vehicles.
My only concern would be if he's no longer in business for some reason or if he passes away.
I mean, we could write something in there. I guess we could draft something that states if, you know, he's in a f-. I don't foresee that happening. Since I've been here, he's only gotten busier every year.
So if we do this, $2,000, how long would it take you to use that on a regular basis? Because you switch cars every year.
Yeah, I mean, if it, if you didn't use it on the municipal building, then we could use it up quickly on new cruisers. $750 a car.
So like three years?
Well, not even because of Chief Nimitz's vehicles.
That's true.
Okay. So a couple of years probably.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
I move to transfer the title of the 2012 Dodge Charger to Motoring Images in exchange for $2,000 in services. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. One of the things that I do periodically, which I guess Denise does more than periodically, like weekly, daily, monthly, whatever it is, and this is a discussion I like to have with the board, some committees and commissions have not been doing their minutes. Obviously, they've met and I know as the conversation I have with Denise is she tries her darndest to get them to do it and they don't seem to comply. And let me know if I'm misnailing anything here, but I think I would like to take, and you know, they're volunteers. But I don't know if the board would be able to, when people come up for reappointment on these particular groups that are behind in their minutes, that we just don't reappoint them. Other than that, we have no control over those particular groups really. But we have a duty to have minutes posted. That's part of the right to know. And I'm just concerned that some of these have been gone for a while. So that's my concern and I think anything that we help out Denise doing, running after these people on a regular basis, so.
Make a suggestion. Have the town minister put a letter together, speaking to those particular terms, because I believe in warnings, and basically say, and put that down there afterwards in the sense that it's very important to have these minutes at the town of Lee. People want to read about these things. It's part of the government's responsibility. And the only power and authority that we have at this point is that when it's time for reappointment, we'll consider not appointing if minutes are not kept up to date, something like that. Instead of just posing it now, this is just a warning time. Is he going to put a draft on it?
Well, I think it has, obviously has to be put in a letter form. You got to tell them, hey, the rules are going to get a little tougher and if we don't get the minutes in, which is required by law, in fact, then, you know, we're going to have to get somebody in there that'll follow the rules. That's the way you do it. But I think you got to give them X amount of time to get their act together. And sure, that's it.
How much time are we giving them to get their acts together?
Apparently more than the seven years Denise has been here.
It's not the same thing. You don't have a hammer. The hammer here is, look, if you want to stay chairman.
I heard Denise tried to get some of these minutes.
So at this point, who's the next person to be appointed in these delinquent minutes? You don't have to give me a name. So somebody might be coming up. All it takes is one or two. I mean, that's, that's all you can do. Unless somebody's not coming up in seven years. So if we get a draft later next time, I appreciate that.
I would draft later. It didn't matter and I didn't think of it until just now, so I don't really have all the facts in front of me. But in going over some election things with the town by tax collector, I think it was relative to the whole ju- the board issue maybe or. By state statute, the town clerk is supposed to advise winners of elections, municipal elections, in writing within X number of days. That I don't believe has been done. And then, once notified in writing, town officials that have been recently elected have for thirty days, thirty days to come in and get sworn in. If they don't get sworn in within the thirty days, they're not elected. So we.
And they can be.
Oh, and they can be charged and fined and. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess it would be us. I'm not sure. I'm not suggesting that we do that.
It's the statute sense.
But it's just, this is another thing that Denise is constantly chasing after people to do. And in some cases, some members of some committees and commissions never get sworn in, which means they really, first off, are not supposed to be there. Second, they're not supposed to sit on the board or committee or commission and they're definitely not supposed to vote on anything. And it's all well and good until some contentious issue comes along and somebody starts digging and finds out that three or four people on a committee or commission were never really officially sworn in.
So.
So we're going to work with the town clerk to try to get things followed to a T, so we'll just keep you apprised.
We have people right now that are outside the next days.
Is everybody filing?
We don't have anybody right now.
It sometimes is a year to try to chase people.
We've gone through a whole rotation without someone being sworn in that has missed an entire rotation, meaning three years.
Yeah. So I think we're really going to have to start enforcing.
I agree.
And I do feel bad because these people are volunteers. I understand that. But first off, we've quite frankly been ignoring the law. And again, it's just another, it's just another thing where Denise spends an inordinate amount of time trying to track people down, so.
Well, I think, I've been in town government for twenty-eight years. I've never got a letter. So I think if you sent out a letter that says, congratulations or condolences, you were elected to a particular position, you have to go to the town clerk to be sworn in within thirty days if you're not. So they have all the information because some people just think, oh, I got elected on this. That's it.
Well, no, they don't. They need to.
Well, some people do and some people.
I recently served on the committee in Hampton and at the very first meeting, the town clerk was there and swore everybody in. Which I thought was a pretty brilliant way of doing it because you've got them as a captive audience. They don't have to come to town hall to do it. So I mentioned that to the town clerk. So maybe that's also another way to try to get it done more expeditiously.
You want to tell us what her response was?
Not along, yeah, not along with it. Sounds like a good idea.
All right.
I mean, yeah, obviously we take coordinating and you'd have to get either the, I think the deputies should be able to swear people in to get one of them, but.
But you had a brand-new committee with everybody.
Yep.
This is one person here, one person, two people here, one person, you know what I mean? You have to go to a meet, a meeting every night for an entire month.
Yeah. I mean, it's going to be easy.
Well, hopefully this will clear up some of these things.
Yep.
I think the latest, most latest one, the oldest one, is 2017. And I'm pretty sure that they met, so.
I cleaned that, well.
Some of them.
Oh, did I send you the responses?
Uh, yes, you did.
Okay.
But like that one, you said you were going to check with somebody. But some of these committees I know they've met since the last time because I was at the meeting, so.
Scott, the letter that we send out, you should, well, that's, she sends out. The letter that we send out, the town sends out, should state in there, okay, you're elected. If within the next thirty days you do not get sworn in, the election is void. And that, you know, that should be in the first letter.
And the state says that you'll be penalized $150 for every day that you don't come in and withdraw your name. Now, I don't want to go that far, but it sounds terrible, doesn't it? You're a volunteer and then you're going to get penalized. No, it's, you know. But yes, well, it puts us in a violation in many ways. So if people are voting on certain things as part of committees and commissions and they're not legally sworn in, their vote is obviously is.
And those are for elected positions that we're talking about with the clerk, not for.
Well, it's the same thing when we appoint somebody, they still go.
That's true. They do. They do. But they don't have to, you know, they're not, it's not the same as.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Keep us up to speed on that, don't you?
Um, second part. I like, I'm ahead of the game. Last time I was kind of like a little bit behind the game, but the March 10th election coverage, we have to determine who's going to be in when and.
I'll be there at seven. I'll be there at 6:30 actually.
Till 11-ish-ish, something like that? I don't even think.
You know what he's worried about, don't you? It's how early he has to get.
Hey, I was there for what, almost six hours last time?
You did good.
I'd do it seven in the morning till 12 or 1 o'clock, whatever the next shift comes.
All right. You don't have to be that early, but, okay.
No, yeah, you do.
How about.
You'll be there at seven in the morning for the first.
No, no, no. How about till noon? I don't think you need to be there till 1 o'clock, but how about till noon? 11 o'clock, 11:30?
Whatever.
Whatever.
We'll do 11 o'clock, Mr. Lacourse.
Yeah.
Assume you're doing your same.
Yeah, I'll do the evening.
Four or five or whatever you get.
What day is that?
That is a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
We know this is a Christmas.
Is this, is this going to be at Mastway also?
No, no.
No, this is a town.
Going to be here? Oh, good, because the food is much better here. The food, the food at Mastway, I don't know what its origin was.
It was pizza spinners.
No.
Pizza spinners and then.
Horrible. You remember something about breakfast shift now?
Oh.
Well, you see, that's what happens. By the time you get there, it's good to all of the ladies that work there have gone home and gotten stuff.
They brought all the cakes and cookies and stuff.
I get nothing.
Well, that's why I do the evening. I do the evening.
That's because you are paid $2,500 a year, Mr. Brown. You're supposed to bring your bag.
I beg your pardon on what? On paid what?
$2,500 a year. You're supposed to bring your own lunch or breakfast.
$2,500 would cover the doctor bill for the evening service.
Oh, my goodness.
I should be there around 4:30, 5:00.
So 11 till 4:30, then 4:30 until whenever it's settled off.
Whatever it is, I have to be. I'll stay there.
So if you can let the moderator know, that's the schedule, so he's aware.
If we could invest in a Keurig machine, it would be a big help. I'll tell you that right now.
These are destroyers of the planet.
Oh, my God.
Destroyers of the planet.
How many species have we lost because I ate a cake cup?
I ate a cake cup.
I'll send you the data.
Oh, my God, a downhill fashion, I'll tell you.
Why don't you put your wishes into the swap shop because it seems like everything else goes through there, so.
I got to put my wishes into the swap shop.
We did discuss that with Steve.
Well, that's fine.
We're going to have to accept stuff to go into the swap shop from Edinburgh people? That's terrible. Who knows who wants their swap stuff? They might have good stuff, you know. That's true. It'd be better than our shop.
One of the things that Steve mentioned, he has to change, we would have to change the designation of our permit. How expansive is that? Is that an expensive thing?
I have, I've talked a number of times with Steve about this and as you know, I was part of the tour when the Edinburgh people came to the transfer station. So I know that we do have to change the permit. I just have not yet. Although I will start now with the board to say, yeah, let's keep going into the legalities of it. I just, I honestly have no idea what it's going to take to do all of this.
Because I would, I would want us not, if there's any cost associated with doing this, those costs need to be transferred to Edinburgh.
Absolutely.
So, okay. Anything else? Nope. Number nine.
Just, you should have received your voter's guide in the mail.
Yes, we did.
I know because a friend of mine was texting me over the weekend, had some questions and I saw on Facebook, I think some people must have gone because they were asking questions.
I didn't get it yet. The one thing, just to let you know, that the town center vision committee, we sent out that thing for the open house. We got reports from some people that did not get it. And we looked up on this because there's four routes in Lee and the people that said that they didn't get it, there was somebody, I believe. said that they didn't get it, there was somebody, I believe, two of the routes, three of the routes? John?
I don't have the numbers, but there were, there were some conflicts, where some people on the route said they did got it, and some people said they didn't.
Yeah, so there was no, like, everybody in route wanted to get it.
Right, right.
So I'm not sure what's going up with that, because I didn't get it. I checked my mail today, I didn't get over the weekend, so...
I think we got ours, but it didn't come today, I think we got it over the weekend, this past weekend.
Okay. So just be aware. I'll let you know if I do get it.
It's also on the website, right?
Oh, it should be on the website.
It's in the e-card, we put it in the e-card.
It should be on the website.
Alright. Anything else?
No.
Number nine. Number 10. Move to accept, agenda is presented.
Yeah, I'd like to pull out A for discussion.
Excuse me, A?
The SMP contract with the library.
Okay.
Anything else you want to pull?
No.
Alright. Do it for a second, on everything but A.
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Alright, A.
I just saw that, it was, proposals put together, some lines are course out, I just want to get confirmation.
This is something that the trustees were at a recent meeting, talking to the board about, and the $2,500 was deducted, because we've already done a lot of work. And so they're just going to rely on the work that's already been done, so that's why those items were crossed out.
Transferred the Revit files that we got from Vali Bressinger?
Yeah.
To, I think with Annie?
Yes.
And she sent them to the SMP.
So if you look down below under compensation, they deducted $2,500 in total cost.
I understand that process. The question I have is that, is their design going to be, is this the CAD drawings of what the existing structure is, or what the CAD drawings of what the proposed structure is? It's not the same as what Vali came up with? This is a different structure?
No, but this is the material that they would have needed in order to do their design work.
Okay, so this has not been the design at all, just the material to do the design work?
It gives them the information of what the existing structure has, or else they'd have to go out and measure everything, so... We've already paid for it, so there's no sense having them do it again, so...
And I didn't, I must have missed it, how long it's going to take to do this?
It's on the timeline.
It's on the timeline, so...
Back page.
Back page.
Right.
Starting, well, January, March of 2021.
March of 2021.
Right, so they're proposing to have it all pulled together for deliberative session.
For deliberative session, 4021. I'm good.